Welcome, everybody. Oh, there's Sarah. Hi, everybody. Welcome to tonight's 12 regular school committee meeting. Thank you all for being here. A couple of quick little announcements. I see we have our winter athletes with us this evening, which we will be meeting and hearing about shortly. I hope that you guys have heard the word on the street is that we are looking to do turf in the next coming years. I think somebody might be out there in the audience with flyers to hand out. So just wanted to let everybody know that turf is hoping to move forward and we need everybody to vote at town meetings in favor of it. So that's my little PR pitch. It's part of our budget. We'd also like you to vote for our budget so that we can keep Masco going forward. So, thank you all. Also, some little steps of positivity today. In the, do we call it the governor's budget still? Or the state budget? The state budget. The step two of nine that we're at right now suggested going forward with 100% reimbursement of transportation, regional transportation costs, which is something that has been promised and never awarded to us. So we're very excited that people are hearing us and hearing our advocacy for it. And maybe it's helping. I don't know. But let's like cross our fingers and continue to advocate for steps seven through nine. That's all from me. We have a bunch of athletes here. So John Zalinas, would you like to come up and tell us what's going on?
Thank you. Thanks for having me. And before I get started, I just want to thank the school committee for the support of the turf project and everyone else. I know that the people in the audience here, a lot of people put hard work and a lot of time in and some people in the audience tonight. So I just want to say thank you for that. There are a bunch of other people I'm going to recognize tonight that may not be here. It's likely because they're competing still at an away event in a spring activity. So I will still mention them if they're not here. So before I get started, and I usually do this, I want to thank the parents who are in the audience, too. You know, I was thinking about this today and it just reminded me of the incredible influence my own parents had on me. And they provided the resources for me to basically do anything that I wanted to do. And they always encouraged me to be what I wanted to be. And, you know, I know that the people and the crowd tonight are the same here. So I just really appreciate that as someone who kind of lived that and was provided that opportunity myself. This is in no particular order, but I wanted to recognize the swimmers and the divers who are here tonight. First, I wanted to mention Heather Russo. She couldn't be here tonight, but I spoke with her earlier. She was the Northeastern Conference Coach of the Year, and she's done a tremendous job with the team. Just wanted to recognize her. Is Megan Bird here tonight? I don't know if she's here, but I wanted to mention Megan. Megan was the NEC diver of the year this year. She's headed to Clark University to continue her academic career, and she's going to continue to participate on the swim dive team at Clark. So we're really excited about that. Willa Pagirani, I don't know if she's here tonight. She was sixth in the one meter diving in the entire state. Bryn Curly, I don't know if Bryn is here. But Bryn was a Salem News All-Star. She was NEC All-Conference in the 100 Free, ninth in the state overall. She was second in the NEC in the 200 individual medley. Want to mention Bryn. Paige Panagos, is Paige here? Wanted to recognize Paige. She was second in the NEC and third in Division One in the 100 Butterfly. She was also an NEC All-Conference member, eighth in the state, second in the NEC. She was also 11th in the state in the backstroke, first in the 200 IM, in 100 in the fly in Division One North. Aubrey Halalay, is Aubrey here? I was working on that pronunciation all day today. Aubrey was all-conference in the 200 Free Relay. I'll be mentioning a few of the other kids who participated on that relay team in a few minutes. Daniel Voner, is Daniel here tonight? Want to recognize Daniel. He's had an unbelievable career for us. He's broken a couple of school records over the course of his career. He's in the top 3% of his class. He's going to be heading to Tufts University in the fall, and he's just been an unbelievable representative for us. So I wanted to mention him. He was also an all-conference member. Landon Bootleer, he was fifth in Division One North in one meter diving and ninth in the state. Colin Panagos, he was also all-conference in the 200 Free Relay, part of that relay team, who was part of that all-conference team. And JPZ was also all-conference in the 200 Free Relay, part of that relay team. So congratulations to those swimmers and divers. Wanted to recognize them. I know that we have Miles Darling here. He's in back in the green sweatshirt. Miles, only a junior, right? So Miles is only a junior, and he comes from a long line of amazing, you know, his siblings, you know, Jack was an amazing wrestler for us. You know, all-state, all-New England wrestler. Is that Virginia Tech? Ian, just graduated last year. And is that Northeastern? And Miles, you know, has just carved out a really great career for himself. Just some of the stats on Miles. At the 120-pound weight class, he was second in all Division Two. He was third at All-States, fourth in New England. Goes without saying, he's a Salem News All-Star, but Miles will be in the mix for one of the best wrestlers in the state and New England next year. And also, just, you know, all of the members of his family have always done really well academically. So just want to recognize that. And then also, to his left, his dad, who is also the coach of the Essex Tech and Masco co-op wrestling program. I just want to thank him because he was a huge part in kind of that merger and it being successful. And I think it's worked out really well. But he was a huge part in kind of making that happen and making it work. And there was a lot of logistics that went into that. And I just wanted to recognize him for all the hard work that he's put in to that. One of his teammates, Colin McAvaney, who's a senior at the 132 pounds. He was third in Division Two. I believe he's going to be headed to Old Dominion in the fall. He was a Salem News All-Star. So wanted to recognize Colin for what he's meant. He's had over 100 career wins for Masco Wrestling, and he's just been an integral part of what we've done over the last 40 years with our program. Girls indoor track, I want to recognize Jenna Lindsay as a Salem News All-Star. She was sixth in all of Division Three in the 600 meters. So I want to recognize Jenna. Nathan Molina Lopez was an NEC All-Conference long jumper. Was just, you know, one of our best, basically, jumpers all season long for us. He was 11th in all of Division Three, a Salem News All-Star. In girls hockey, I don't know if Bitsy King is here tonight? Not tonight. But I wanted to recognize Bitsy just because she's been a great leader for us. I think we have a real promising group of kids coming up. But Bitsy made the all-conference team this year, but she's been a great leader for us, a huge advocate for women's ice hockey and the girls' ice hockey program. And I just appreciated everything that she's meant to those ice hockey program at Masco, and she'll definitely be sorely missed. She was also a Salem All-Star for us. Maddie Kenny, is Maddie here this evening? I wanted to recognize Maddie as an NEC All-Star and a Salem News All-Star. And she'll be back with us next year. We're looking forward to her improvement and her continued success. I know Brendan and Matt are here because they're right in front of me. Want to recognize Brendan as an NEC All-Star. He's here in the gray polo shirt here, right next to me. Just also a great student as well and just been a huge part of our boys' basketball program. And I think for us, too, they helped lay the foundation, like a set, kind of a culture of our boys' basketball program, where I think, I see it every day, how hard they work in practice. And I know that that is going to pay off down the road, and they've been a huge part of it. Matt Richardson is an all-conference member for us in boys' basketball. Matt's actually going to be going to Endicott to play football. And he was just an unbelievable football player for us. Pretty much did everything. And, you know, as a basketball player, he had two games this year where he scored over 40 points in separate games. And this is kind of his second sport, so to speak. But he just could do things on the basketball court physically that other players couldn't do. And where he's going to be sorely missed. He's also, you know, one of our best defenders and rebounders, just an all-around, you know, outstanding athlete. And his coaches also talk about his leadership, which is even more important. So that, to me, is just as impressive. You know, Coach Monigal is here. Coach Heinz just speaks so highly of both of these guys. So I'm just really happy for them and the career they had. And I know they're going to be off to bigger and better things. Girls basketball, Taylor Bavardi. I'm not sure if Taylor's here or not tonight. I wanted to recognize Taylor. She was an all-conference in girls' basketball. She's actually going to be heading to Union to play college soccer and continue her academic career. So congratulations to Taylor. Kaylee is here tonight. So Kaylee Monigal, she's got her. But she's going to be going to the University of South Carolina so for a little bit more sunny and warm weather. But she's just been a tremendous four-year student athlete for us. And she's going to be sorely missed, for sure. Just her personality, leadership qualities, you know, outstanding field hockey player, basketball player, her character, toughness, everything that just can't be replaced. And so Kaylee, thank you for everything you've done. Mia Theverge, I don't know if Mia's here this evening. Yes, Mia. I wanted to congratulate Mia. She was an NEC All-Star. Since she started in our program as a ninth grader, she's been one of our better girls' basketball players in the program. And she's going to be back next year, and we're going to be looking forward to big things from Mia. She had a great year this year, and we're really looking forward to kind of watching her growth and leadership. Angie Lalekis, I know, I think Angie's here. She had a great, great season this year. Another NEC All-Star. Again, I think we're going to be looking for Mia and Angie to really kind of step up and be a valuable part of the program. And Angie had an outstanding season and for that was named an NEC All-Star. Our ski team. So the girls have had an unbelievable run. Our girl ski team has finished undefeated in the North Shore Ski League the last two seasons. We're 14-0 again this season. And I want to recognize Charlotte's here, right? Charlotte Hills here. So the last two seasons in particular, Charlotte has basically been one of the best skiers in the state. She was a state champion last year. She's, let's see, she was second in overall points in the North Shore Ski League this year. I believe she's headed to UConn, is that correct? So she's headed to the University of Connecticut. And she was named a Salem News All-Star recently. But she's just been one of the best skiers in the state of Massachusetts and just been unbelievable for us and certainly deserves that recognition. Amanda Schneider, is Amanda here? Amanda's not here, but Amanda was third overall in the North Shore Ski League, 12th in the state in the slalom, a Salem News All-Star. She's also an excellent soccer player for us. I want to recognize some of these other kids who finished. These kids who finished in the top of the North Shore Ski League also qualified for the All-States. Megan Riley was fifth in qualified her for the All-States. Hannah Mitchell, Haley Sarafino. Nicole Schneider finished 13th. And I believe, I think I saw Ethan Daly. Is Ethan here? Ethan Daly is here. Ethan was a Salem News All-Star on the boy side. He was 13th overall in points in the North Shore Ski League. And Ethan also played soccer for us, is that correct? Ethan also is on the soccer team. And David Palmer, I don't know if David's here. But David is only a ninth grader, and he finished 14th. So hopefully, there are some good things to come on the boy side as well with the ski team. But it's been a really, and the only two losses that the ski team had this year was to St. John's Prep, I believe. So I think we were 10-2. And the only two losses were to, you know, a powerhouse of a program. Boys hockey, I believe, is Joe Young here? I don't know if Joe is here. Joe couldn't make it. All right. I wanted to recognize Joe. He was an NEC All-Star in boys' hockey. Joe's just been a great part of our program the last four years. And also, I know his father's been an integral part of the boosters. I wanted to recognize him for that. A lot of behind-the-scenes work. Anthony is here, right off of the baseball field. And I think we won by a couple today, right? So Anthony Serbone, I wanted to recognize Anthony. He was an NEC All-Star. And I'm not sure, I think Salem News All-Star as well. But Anthony's also on our golf team. He's our catcher on our baseball team. As you can see, he's in his baseball uniform right off of the field. So glad to hear we won today. But it's been great to kind of get to know Anthony over the course of this year. And I just want to thank him for everything he's done in all three sports for us. He's been a tremendous influence on all three, for all three programs for us. Last, but certainly not least, the gymnastics team. I think we have to create some more walls for the gymnastics state championship banners that we seem to be accumulating. But the gymnastics team has won four state championships in a row now, which is just, it's incredible. And I want to recognize Coach Gomes, who couldn't be here tonight because of family reasons. But also Jana Mowers, who's our assistant coach. And I'm going to mention her daughter in a minute. But the two of them, I thought, did probably as good a coaching job. You know, we had some injuries this year and went through some other kind of challenges. And their leadership, I think, was instrumental in our success. Bella Missura is here. She's got the University of Illinois t-shirt on, which is apropos, because that's where she'll be going. I know she's only a junior this year, but she's committed to the University of Illinois, and she'll be competing on the gymnastics team in a couple of years, and we're so excited about that. She's a state champion. She's the NEC MVP this year. She is a Globe and Herald All-Scholastic. I could go on and on about all of the honors, but most impressive is she's so humble, is the most impressive of all of her qualities to me. So Bella's just been absolutely incredible for us along with a bunch of these other student athletes I'm going to mention. Kenna Miyazaki was all-conference on the vault. Greta Mowers, who's one of our captains, Jana's daughter, is a three-sport student athlete for us. She probably was still at the away track meet today. But she's also a field hockey All-Star for us. She's been everything for us in gymnastics, too. And third in the state on vault. I believe she's headed to the University of South Carolina next year, a Salem News All-Star. She's just been a tremendous leader for us. Fallon Eberhart was all-conference on bars. Janie Young, who I believe is only a ninth grader, was all-conference on beam, eighth overall in the state, a Salem News All-Star. Mary Brant was fourth in the state on beam. Maya Champlain was a Salem News All-Star. She's going to the University of New Hampshire to compete on their cheerleading team. Kate Muggie was a Salem News All-Star. I also want to recognize our captains, Fiona Balzen and Brooklyn O'Darty, for their leadership. So those two and Greta have just been great leaders on the gymnastics team. So they've been absolutely phenomenal. So I want to recognize those three for everything that they've done, kind of keeping a team together. You don't win state championships accidentally. There's a lot of things that kind of come into place. So, thank you. I know there was a lot to cover. I tried to be as thorough as I could. But again, I just want to thank everybody who's here. And this is something that I really enjoy doing. And it's real meaningful for me to recognize all of these students and parents and for everything that they've done. So, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. We really appreciate everything that you guys are doing out there on our fields and courts and mats. I don't know. But, you know, I do, we pushed for athletics in this budget, even though it was hard. And we added some area because we understand that. We added some extra teams because they were teams that were historically cutting because we know that sports are really important to kids' feelings of belonging in school. So even though it was a tough budget cycle, we wanted to make sure that we added as much as we could because, you know, kids are best, doing their best when they're happy and happy and healthy and involved. So, thank you all, and continued good luck to all you and your sports and your school. So, and you're welcome to stay, or you can leave. Happy that you got to see your kid. I was watching mine as I walked in.
I'm sorry.
There's a spot for you.
Actually, so, right, either way, that's all right. First time.
That's crazy.
It is amazing.
We're just going to wait until they clear out till we get going. Next. Do we have anybody that has any comments from the audience? Hearing none, I'd like to introduce our new SAB, Lilia Thomas. I welcome you to say whatever you have prepared and whatever you want. And you can sit there, you can stand, you can do whatever's most comfortable for you. Also know that you are more than welcome to stay and participate in our meeting. Stay and just listen to our meeting or go home because you have homework to do or a TV show to watch or whatever it is that you want to do. So just feel free to, you know, to.
Stay as long as you'd like.
So, where's yours?
I'm Lilia Thomas. I'm going to be the new SAB-at-large after Rachel. I'm currently a sophomore, and I'm really looking forward to work here on this committee. In preparation for tonight, I sought out some feedback from different school students and the student council reps and the other student body members for their thoughts on our school year. I'm going to keep this short, but this is the information that I've gotten. The juniors are gearing up and getting ready for prom in May and have really good ticket sales. The seniors have now left for their break and are going to start their internship next week. The classic elections have ended, and the new student council is very excited for their upcoming team next year. As the year comes to the close, the student council is looking for any last fundraisers they can do this year. And many of the students shared good outlook on this last quarter, and overall feedback was positive. Everyone's pretty happy with everything at the school, and they're pretty busy but are motivated by one another. Thank you. That was basically all I had.
Does anybody have any questions, really? Great. Rest of the evening.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Legit communications plan. So, I don't know if I uploaded the newest version of this flyer. I forgot if it looked like it.
Newer version, I won't show it.
I mean, it basically looks like this.
Different colors.
Different colors.
Different colors.
I can, not. So, last we met, we had had a communication, community relations committee meeting just before our both meetings because we knew we had a lot of work to do communicating out to the public about our budget, our turf project, and getting people out to town meetings to, and to, yes, to vote in favor of our budget. So, two of the three towns will be having overrides in Boxer and Topseal, Middleton will not. And so those towns require voting, yes, voting at town meeting and voting at the ballots in favor of the budget. So with that, we got together. Patty spearheaded this flyer as a beginning source to get the word out. Somebody had given me the idea that Middleton's Council on Aging emails a newsletter to every person in Middleton who's over the age of 60. And so I have been able to get it into that newsletter. But basically, looking for other ideas as to where we can get the word out because it's really important to get not just the normal town meeting people to town meetings, but, you know, the people who were in our audience before, you know, all of our school community and to everybody in the three towns that don't necessarily know what's happening at Masconomis. So Mike is set to be meeting with council of aging, councils of aging in Boxer and in Middleton. Trying to get.
Working on Topseal.
Working on Topseal. But I wanted to just use this opportunity to kind of step forward, brainstorm other ideas as to what we can possibly do. Turf Up has been a tremendous partner in communications with the school committee and has a great communication plan to be going out. And it's already started on social media and then beyond. So they have definitely taken the reins with that, and they're working forward for that. But, you know, we also have to be doing it in tandem. And like I said, this flyer is kind of a step one. And so I'd love to hear what other people have to say and ideas that we can reach out to, get the information to, et cetera, et cetera.
Is the flyer finalized?
The, not this one. Let me, let me see. What's your, do you have a comment on it?
Well, the version, I see, the red.
Yeah, is annoying, right?
Well, you never want to put in red stuff that has to do with finances. That connotation.
Colors have changed. The color, so now it's all in black with the headers on each of the side. The header on turf is in green, and the header on Masco is in red. On the budget is in red. But you shouldn't do red. But what other color can we do?
What was red for Masco?
It was Masco red. But it's, I know, I was like, blue? I don't know. I heard that.
The, on the budget side, you know, operating assessment, 5.1 tuition increase, 14%. And then a couple of other bullets with no percentages. And then on the chart, the district tuition is 24%. So it just, it seems too hazy.
Too hazy.
That's.
For the other ones?
That, you know, on some things, you have percentage. On some things, you don't. On, you know, on a percentage on other district tuition, I know the difference between the 24 and the 14, but the casual observer sees it's 14 here and 24 there. You know, what's going on?
So clear this up.
So, you know, what I, I would leave the chart the way it is, but change, you know, the operating assessment increase of 1.55 million budget increase drivers in those three or four bullets, however many you want, put dollar amount.[1760.16] Because that, I think, you know, is sometimes a percentage, you know, is more indicative. Sometimes the dollar amount is, and it's easier to understand if, if you have that 1.55 million budget increase and then three or four bullets that get you there or close to there.
You guys got that?
Sort of. I found it sent to you guys too.
Other point, I, you know, I think I'm sitting next to Costa and I see he has blown this page up so he can actually see what's on it. I don't think, you know, the font here is, is just too small to be useful. I mean, you can't read it, so. Well, I mean, if we're handing these out, you know, I just, I just, I'm just not convinced that, and I know that a lot of effort, I think, you know, Joe may have done it to put that, that particular two charts together. I'm just not sure just how helpful they are. It's just.
Charts of all the font. The charts are.
The two charts.
Yeah, okay.
They're small.
They are small. We could put them on the back too. We talked about something on the back.
They have different numbers. That, you know, they changed. They have different numbers.
It's showing two different things, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, it's showing two different things.
So, like pop up and raise his hand. He helped us live the chart.
He did the charts, yeah.
They are different things.
I couldn't tell.
Well, the original labeling on the chart on the bottom looks like it disappeared.
Probably.
Difference between them. Yeah.
Okay.
We can regenerate them any, any way anyone likes, of course, so.
Yeah. To Costa's point, I had wondered about with the pie chart using dollar amounts versus percentage for some, in a similar way, because I think, to me.
Easy to do. Yep. Big dollar amounts, is that what we want? Meaning large font, dollar amounts.
I think the intention of the pie originally was to show, maybe we don't do this, but how much of the,
Where it's going.
What's driving the increase?
Yeah.
You do it by dollars, it's gonna be like all salary, but that's not what's driving the increase.
Well, the increase, the dollar of the, out of district is more than the salary.
The dollar increase of the?
Yes.
Yeah.
Even in the pie, the pie slice is also bigger.
Oh, you mean just use the dollars instead of the?
That, it was, it was just something, one of the.
I just didn't want to use the total dollars.
In Topsfield where we have, where we do have an override, actually Boxford does too. You know, I was kind of, I haven't dug close, but thinking about how we talk to people and realizing that the override is basically the amount of increase that we had no control of.
Remember when, I think Jeff presented us, told us about the out of district tuition stuff? He said that's 2% of our budget right there.
Yeah.
Like, only that. And, and then we couldn't, you know, that's all we're supposed to be going up every year, so.
So that's part of the reason why I was thinking dollar amounts. It kind of translates more quickly to someone who's seeing, I'm approving a dollar amount override and I'm seeing a dollar amount increase.
So keep the pie slices the same, which are dollars instead of percentage. It was a thought.
Yeah, no, I didn't understand.
Those labels, though, are gonna get really busy and really tight if you're putting dollar amounts in all of.
You don't need to be so specific on the big slices and all the, you know, all the small slices are just other.
Just like the big, yeah, that's an idea.
Salary, transportation, out of district tuition, and then other.
Yeah, you call those out anyway, so.
Yeah, I had actually thought about just making a bunch of those little categories other originally, so, easy enough.
Thank you for doing that, by the way, Joe.
Thank you for being here, considering your other side of the world.
Where are you today?
I am in Singapore.
Okay. We never know. I, I agree with Costa also on the dollar amount above. I think that's another, like the bullets, it does, I like that idea.
Trevor had a comment?
I just think maybe it would be beneficial to add in the first paragraph on the left where it says mandated services, maybe include mandated services from the state. Just if we're talking about average onlooker.
Yep.
So state mandated services.
Right in there. Yeah, I'm just, yeah.
You guys got comments on?
Yeah, make a little notes.
I appreciated the, the using of Canva because I keep hearing how awesome it is. Even I could figure out a couple things, not much, but I figured out a couple things. Enough to make this into a PDF. And did we figure out what color the budget should be written on? Or should it just stay left? Or stay black?
We can just make it black font.
If you're looking.
We can, we can put the red where it says regional school committee, just given that it's Masco colors.
Yeah.
And then just make that black.
That's what it is right up there.
I have a picky form. Because you're trying to condense the space, there are two separate paragraphs. So it should be indented just so that you know they're a new paragraph. Normally I like the all on the left. Can you say that again?
To have the paragraph have an indent, each new paragraph have an indent.
That was the format that it came.
Yeah.
Yeah, just because it, it looks like you're trying to, I know what you're trying to do. You want it to fit as much space in as possible. You probably have a space issue.
And Trevor?
After watching the Boxford selectmen meeting, when, in the turf section, when it says turf fields and related amenities, should we be specific? I think it's worth a conversation after that meeting.
Right.
They touched about the stands and stadium.
Right.
For those of you that weren't there, they have been hearing about turf fields, but they didn't realize that the turf fields come with a stadium and a, I don't know what the building's called.
Facilities.
An help building that has bathrooms and team rooms in it, so.
Sessions storage.
So, what was the term that was, that was used?
And in here, it says amenities.
I put that sentence there using information that we've been working on with the Turf Up, the Turf Up Task Force, trying to get consistent language, which actually, if the school committee hasn't seen the flyer that's been getting circulated out there yet, I don't think everybody's like, can the school committee, can we get everybody copies of that too? Thanks. So some of that language is, there's an attempt to have as much consistency as possible wherever it's being shared. So that, I pulled straight from that spare document. But I mean, it's still worth a conversation, just. So, I just ask a clarifying question. So when you say you're suggesting multipurpose turf fields and slated amenities such as stadium seating and bathrooms?
I didn't propose any language. I just wanted the.
No, but I'm, is that what you're getting at? Like, just to specify.
Like something that.
What it is.
Right.
Yeah.
So, people aren't, get no idea type thing.
You know, and lighting.
And lighting.
That's part of the, the plan and that's, you know, it's kind of, that might be, people might be curious and if it comes about and they haven't known from the start, lighting, you know, it.
Not really need.
I haven't. Ask the question, are we, can we go back to the charts for a minute? Are we suggesting taking out the second chart entirely, or are we keeping the second chart? I think you have one bigger or?
If, if it makes sense to make one bigger, it would be to, so that it's more impactful, it would be the pie chart.
Take the other one out.
I think.
Joe, would we, can we ask Joe to speak to the intent with the other one? Just if you wouldn't mind, Joe, to help us understand.
He's getting there. Let's get his finger up. Does he know he's on mute?
He knows.
Yeah, yeah, I was having trouble finding the Zoom button. I was looking at the, the charts themselves. No, the intent on the first one was just to show you what the percentage of the increase is. And then the second one was showing the year-over-year change in the individual items, showing you that the out of district transportation just totally, you know, blew up, right? So the impact on the overall budget is the first one. And the second one is just how large these increases are in sort of unprecedented, really. But yeah, I think the first one's probably the easier one for people to understand. And yeah, if we're gonna go to one, I would say the pie chart is, is the one to go with.
I agree, generally speaking, but one thing I liked about the second one is, the first one is the dollar amounts, right, year-over-year increase. But the second one's showing, like, it's just fascinating to me to see that the, it's demonstrating that the salary increase as a percentage compared to itself is very, very small.
It's in line with what we expected.
Drivers.
Right.
Yeah. So if we don't use it here, I would recommend, if there's any other, like, if you're showing slides anywhere else, if we could still, if we can get that in, for, like, we were talking about other ways to reach people. Topsfield has a moderator forum on Tuesday, the 25th, where they've invited us to, to share whatever we want. So we'll probably be putting together a few slides for that. I think this slide would be helpful there.
And Tasha, as I told you from the, when you first joined the school committee,
Masco. Way back when.
Should be doing a report at town, at every town meeting.
Shoot, I was supposed to call the moderator today. Yeah, we were talking about, talking about turf as that. So, so does that just mean that you wanted to give a, a report for Masco at the town meeting?
I think, yeah.
If you would like to do this? I think Mike did it. That was, yeah.
No, no, I mean.
First special fall town meeting.
Yeah.
One year.
But you used to do them all the time, right, in, in your other district?
Yes.
So you're like, you actually are good at that.
Out of practice.
Okay.
But, you know, it, with longer term projects, whether it was the municipal complex, the master plan, you know, passage and implementation, having a consistent report at town meetings about the progress that is being made and the challenges that are being faced has proven really effective in getting things, you know, approved. And for the greater capital project that people don't know a lot about, that is one way to communicate. And there is a core of people that come to every town meeting. And getting them educated helps educate a whole slew of other people.
So if we were to, to do just like a few slides, kind of something like this with what's driving the increases in our budget, talk about the turf and talk about an upcoming capital plan that they will be hearing in future years. Like just a little bit, like what happened in our budget process this year.
Kind of, but, you know, kind of, you know, short, you know. You, you hit the highlights and then you build on it as you, and then, you know, if there's a fall town meeting, so you build on that. But consistently giving updates as to the status of things are that. In Middleton, at least, this has proven very effective in longer term projects.
And I don't think it has to be slides necessarily.
Trevor, you want to do it?
Oh, yeah, maybe next year.
We were gonna.
I volunteered.
We have a chair from our town.
I thought Dominic's, didn't you hear him say you wanted to do it?
Dom's really interested.
But it's not necessarily slides. Like, I don't think the other town.
I mean, it's, you know, some committee reports do have slides from the building committee on the municipal complex was doing it, but it doesn't have to be. When I was doing them for the master plan in the late 90s, there were no projections.
Back in the day, they didn't know how to project things back then. Joe, you have your hand up?
I, I think, actually, Costa might have just, Costa might have just answered, answered my question. But I haven't seen anything presented at a Boxford town meeting ever that wasn't related to a question or budget item, you know? There's no open communication of whatever is happening in town on certain issues that I can recall. I guess it's different in Middleton.
Yes, our, Article one of our warrant is always to hear committee reports.
Ooh, that could add two hours to our town meeting if we did that.
But there's only, only a few committees. So, I mean, that they, like, it's only the elementary schools. Masco never was up there. Brought it on when you told me to do it the first.
Teresa Bono did it once or twice. And then, you know, when, you know, you took her seat and I suggest, and you're the liaison, suggested that, you know, you do it.
Okay.
But it seems to me that if, you know, beyond the request in, in this particular budget, we know that we're going to be going to the towns, hope maybe in, in six months, or maybe it's another year. But my guess is that we're going to be coming to the town seeking funding either for, for the immediate needs of the, the capital plan or the whole of the capital plan. So spending a few minutes educating those that are there that this is coming down the road. Here's where we are, these various processes. But it here's where you can go to learn more about what we're doing. But we've got to at least, you know, state that loudly and clearly, you know, at the, at these town meetings. So people, my guess is that if, if they're not gonna hear it there, there's gonna be, we're gonna struggle to, to tell them in any other location. So let's take advantage of it.
So can we do that in, in the other two towns?
So.
Sure we can.
So Topsfield is invited to provide a slide. One slide. We got one slide.
Can you talk about?
But, the advice was maybe to think about if we really wanted to do that. So is because information overload to our residents with a big elementary override, I'm talking about Topsfield only, might be confusing the issue. We'll talk.
Yeah, okay, we can talk about that.
Reps can talk.
Yep.
There's some concern about information overload.
When were they going to like work that into the town meeting? If you do.
So I believe it's part of the reports, but we'd be following like the elementary school, which would be.
So you have a reports part of your town meeting too?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you not?
I've never seen that, no.
Maybe it should be suggested.
I'd as well get one in, Carolyn.
Before you leave.
I have a quick, I mean, it's, I have a quick thing to add about the communication. Because I know last time we met as a subcommittee, we talked a little bit about the idea of, is a flyer like this, is it possible to get it out to all the residents? And some folks were gonna check on that, how we would do that logistically, post office or whatever.
Hey, Billy, you were getting some in.
Yep, and I did.
We did bulk mailing and Hamilton won them.
Bulk mailing.
I was just doing bulk mailing.
Did I see that one up today?
So the Topsfield COA or Friends of the COA paid $875 to deliver one triple folded sheet to every household.
When was that?
Pardon?
When was that?
They did this last year, I think.
A year.
Here's some examples of Wilmington includes this four-sided newsletter in their tax bills border.
Writing. That's a lot of writing. Talking about small.
The water department sends this, you know, for the water quality report. Do it, you know, once a year. Just postal customer, no name, so the post office, one to every.
That's bulk. You get it. To put on those.
And the, the, the stream team recently did this.
Right.
And again, no, no names, just, you know, post office gets a bunch of them and just deliver to every address.
That's what we did in the last example, was a laminated card, bulk mail. Every mailbox got.
Do you have, do you have any recollection of what it cost?
How many?
Uh, how many, how many residents are in the three towns together? Four, thirty thousand?
On household.
Yeah, household.
Middleton is nine, oh, how many?
Foxborough's like six.
There's-
Would you guess?
Thirty-six hundred households in Middleton.
Okay.
About half that in Topsfield.
What about the same in Oxford? Well, probably less.
And probably.
That was another idea. You, you did the, um, stream team. Another idea I had, turf, was to, uh, have booths at the stream team, um, at the Earth Day events coming up. And I don't know how to do this, but make QR codes to bring them to the communications, uh, in addition to a couple flyers, but figure the more earth-friendly, the better.
When is that?
So Earth Day in Middleton is on the twenty-second, I think. I mean, they're coming up.
Oh, there's the week, the week after.
You'd have the flyer right there.
First of March, April thirtieth, Sunday.
Yours is the twenty-second?
Also the twenty-second this year.
Okay.
Thirtieth.
Yeah. Foxford do an Earth Day event.
We do.
How do we?
Twenty-nine.
Twenty, the Saturday.
So that's good. None of them are on the same day, because we've had that problem before.
So we got four, twenty-two, twenty-nine. And we can also be getting information about the budget at this, the turf felt more relevant. Um.
So, other thoughts?
For the visuals, Tossa.
I think we should send, because I think it's really the only way we're gonna reach people.
Everybody.
Do we want this to be the mail out?
That was the idea behind it.
Right, that was the original idea.
I mean, we could put that on a shiny postcard.
One side for each. My one thought about if we're going to spend the money on a mail out like this and the resources of printing as well, and turf is going to also be doing a lot of communication. That's covered here. But we don't make any, we're going to need, the place where we need to be doing a lot of communication, just us pushing, is the capital work that's coming up the pike. And that's not even touched here. The stuff that's in this flyer, and I like, I appreciate the flyer, and I think it's going to be helpful to us, but as far as a community-wide mailing, budget stuff is pretty basic stuff that your people are already here on the town meeting floor. Place they really need to hear it, towns with overrides, we can have our own little separate communications. The turf information is extremely important, but it's also, there's like a big campaign for how that's going to get out in other avenues. I'm not sure if this is the time to use those resources, if, or if we should kind of wait until we have more capital information and to just have a communication plan for that and do a big mailing then.
That's a good point.
Because I think when you get something in your mail that you're not used to getting, you're kind of like, what's this? And if it doesn't even mention it, and then next year, no one's heard anything, and then suddenly they're getting a mailing and that's it.
Can we add, coming soon?
I don't know if we have enough info.
I mean, I, I agree. I agree totally with that. And we could use this flyer and this design though, and push it out through other means. Yeah.
Media letters, yeah.
List, newsletters, like, we can utilize it, but I think we do need to hold in reserve the big ask that we're going to be making eight months from now.
People, what I'm hearing is people are saying, yes, uh, we're going to spend money to get the word out that the capital budget is probably the more important thing to get the budget, to get the word out on?
Yeah.
I just have, like, the way that our interpretation of passing our budget is now, I, and we don't know if we're necessarily going to be in the same situation. I know we told the select board, we, the Middleton reps told them we'd look into amending the regional agreement, so it reads how it was historically interpreted. And if we spend the money now, I think, if we wait, I'm scared that we're going to wish we spent it now because one piece of our budget didn't pass in each town or something to that effect. Where I think it could be different in next year, when we're having this conversation.
I mean, it is super important. There's a lot of votes that need to be had to have our budget pass.
And add, adding beyond the immediate ask frightens people.
Yeah. I agree. I don't think that should-
You don't have a lot of concrete
Okay.
information that they haven't heard a lot of, above prior to.
So don't give them a sneak peek in this.
Uh, but, but hey, if, if, if we do that, are we, six months from now, are we going to have the conversation coming out of your mouth that, well, you haven't talked to them about this yet, so how do we expect them to be behind it?
I told you from the start that I don't think that it makes sense to ask for forty-six, seventy million dollars until May of twenty-five. And that gives you two years to develop the plan, educate, so that it passes the first time.
And freeze and get-
That happens is fail the first time.
The worst thing that happens is if the HVAC fails or the roof falls.
Yeah. Communities have, have dealt with that. You know, the boiler at the old town meeting blew up in the winter. It had to be emergency repaired.
When?
Several years before it got knocked down.
I was there then. Yes.
Like, go first.
You too.
And up first, did I? I thought you did. Oh, well, I was just going to say, my understanding when we were talking about this flyer idea was, it was originally thought about immediate needs of what's coming up with the town meetings and the voting and all of that. That's where I thought this came from. That capital plan was not part of it, because it was more time-sensitive to get it out to everyone quickly. Um, and my, my mind goes to two things. Could we add, like, I added in a little blurb to the Boxford newsletter over the winter that these are things we're talking about with the capital plan coming. There were no numbers attached or anything like that. Just kind of a little snapshot. And I wonder, could we add, when we take out this other graph, we add in a little upcoming, you know, our, our discussions, just an update, just saying, these are things we're talking about. Tune into our many meetings, like, not going into depth. We do is do this fire for now to everyone. And then several months later, we do another one. That's just a capital plan. Just my thoughts, but.
Pretty good lead-in, because I was kind of thinking that, again, like, this original intent of this was for this year's FY twenty-four budget, which, by the way, makes me realize that we definitely should have some dates on it. We, we never added, we never thought to add town meeting.
Yeah.
Each town's town meeting dates, which we can put where the, if we remove the graph. But, um, I was thinking, for the bigger push, we have a strategic plan that's also being worked on. I think maybe this is a community relations project to create something that is so more like, we just set our goals, like, we set our goals in the summer. Sort of that timing of, okay, we haven't even gotten to budget. Here's what we're in the middle of at Masco, just so everybody knows. Pretty picture. There's a strategic plan being the works, there's capital plan, and you know, here are some of our goals for this year, and we look forward to seeing you at town meeting next spring. And-
Like a preview.
Yeah.
Joe?
Yeah, I, sorry, I just wanted to say I, I have to, uh, leave now. I've got to run to a factory, so, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Joe, for the hand.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye. For another, so, okay, so what I'm hearing is that we should be sending something out. Do we want to be mailing it out? We should be sending basically something similar to what we're talking about tonight out immediately, or as soon as possible. Do we want to be mailing it? I mean, that could be our new way of, of, uh, sending out communications, or do we just try and blast it out? I'm, I'm just afraid that the people who are going to see it are the people who are on Facebook, or are not the people who are going to town meetings all the time. And, um, or the people who aren't involved in our space.
I was going to suggest a handout at town meetings, and that, because that can capture all those people.
We're going to be competing, or not us, but you guys more so with the elementary schools, I think, because I bet they're going to be doing the same thing.
They're going to look at that, this and go like, oh, you only want two hundred something? Easy, easy.
I think it'd be worth sending it out to everyone.
Nailing it.
Does it have to be an if, or, or could it be both?
Move both. We have budget for both.
Okay, so mail, mail this out now.
If we can do it later for the capital plan too, I think.
I, I, so I, I guess the only thing I would, I, I don't know what the best thing is, but I'm thinking if I'm a Boxford person who really hasn't heard about any of this, and there's been overrides in the past and never got any mailings about them, and then I get a mailing this year about an override and a turf project, and then six months later, I get something about a capital plan, I don't, I feel like, kind of like poking the bear, and then that's my only fear. Like, I almost feel like the mailing should be the big reveal of the strategic plan and the capital plan, and not for, for these smaller amounts. That's my only, like, I'm just thinking, I don't want people to start thinking that, oh, my gosh, every year Masco's going to be asking for something.
Well, but could it just be, this is the new way Masco's doing business. We want to get the word out to everybody.
Yeah, we don't have a paper anymore.
No, I, I, yeah, I don't, I get all that. I totally get all that.
No, no, but could that be the, it could be-
I don't know how you communicate that reason.
We'd say, Masco's new-
First annual newsletter.
Yeah.
First annual flyer.
And, and then you kind of commit yourselves to doing a second.
Oh, that's true.
So update, May twenty-twenty-three year.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I worry that we're not going to get the information out if we don't do it, because-
Yeah, I would make sure the capital plan one is like bigger and on heavier papers. And this one is on the lighter. I just don't want them to think they're two of the same.
Yeah.
Things.
Yeah.
It sounds like as a committee, we want to kind of commit to, um, doing a newsletter of sorts in the future on an ongoing basis, whether that's annually or biannually or-
Let's start with annually.
Let's, let's start with one.
I'd support that.
Okay.
I mean, personally, I'm not a big fan of spending the money to mail this this year. I wouldn't mind having it be something that we plan, if we're talking about a newsletter, that we plan more thoughtfully and kind of like what I talked about before, like, have it be a little bit more like a mini newspaper and have it maybe feature some of the-
Where's that pink one?
Things that we like, want people to know are happening.
Like this.
Yeah.
All these ones with all those words.
Honestly, though, on the words.
It was less words because some pictures and postal customer.
I would. Again, it's a different demographics, right? So it's a, it's marketing, right? You kind of-
Yeah, right. This is a little out of context.
Have to, as men, communicate in a lot of different ways when you're marketing something. So that captures my parents. Instagram captures my kids. And like, everything else, the website or Facebook or the blogs, capture your generation, right? So you kind of have to do it all if you really want to. This doesn't even mention overrides, just because it's all three.
That's going to be, my question is, could we socialize this document with people who have not been following the story? And ask them, does this give you the information you need to support the Masco budget? Because we're also in the weeds of it.
Yeah.
And when we read it, we know exactly what it's referring to. I think we need to take some completely clueless folk and say, what does this tell you? And is this compelling?
Like, ask our parents.
So, I could put them in our, my neighbors' mailbox and see what happens.
We, we're just really always, yeah. Time-sensitive, that's the issue, because Topsfield Town Meeting is on May second, and that's, right.
I'm just, and I'm just one person. I'm just expressing that for me, it doesn't feel worth spending the money to do, but if other people, if, if the consensus is, of course, if it's to help.
If you're talking about the capital plan, a mailing isn't going to do it.
Not in its entirety.
Yeah, go, go to the council on aging, the, uh, the PTA, Friends of the Library, Friends of the Council on Aging. In Middleton, there's three large condo complexes. See if you can get to a, one of their meetings. Uh, neighborhoods, basically, it will take, from the time it's proposed, to passage presentations to at least fifteen different groups over a five-week period, leading to the election.
So we're not talking about that this year. Um, but that's good to know. Good to know. So I think the question is now, are we doing a mailing or are we not? So let's say hands and, or eyes in favor of, um, doing a mailing. One, two, three, four, five. And how many of us are here?
Nine.
Nine? So passes. Are we okay with that? Yes, we're good. So, um.
Our content, like, do people feel okay with the, just focus on the left to start with? The content, if the Patty talk was going to, we were going to do, change the-
I thought we were only changing a few things that we, that I would have thought.
But like, those changes on the left, and then on the right, um, are we making any changes on the right? Did we decide?
I don't think there were changes needed.
Amenities.
Yeah.
Did we want to touch on that?
They describe it here as support buildings. I do want to, like, I think when, we wanted to keep it, like you said, like, the short and sweet. So there is a little concern of, like, once you start listing, like, then it gets a really, like-
And I get that. I just feel like if that-
Yeah.
Someone from the select boards is, yeah, an issue.
Yeah.
Feel not represented.
Tasha, she was saying, a stadium is not an amenity. Yeah.
What is not an amenity?
A stadium.
It's not, yeah.
A stadium.
But it's just-
Want me to make a bleacher?
It's, it's just bleachers.
I can make those changes and then just send them to you and see, and see if it's what everyone's saying.
Yeah. Oh, and Joe.
Joe, yeah.
Are you going to slap the vision on there, Vision twenty-twenty-five at least, or something, or no?
Okay. We should slap a, um, Mas- Masco Spring twenty-twenty-three. How's that?
Well, I mean, we definitely-
Need a year.
We need a year.
I think that, I think date and the town meeting.
Spring newsletter. No, it's not a newsletter, though. Spring.
I think just spring update or spring-
Update.
Twenty-twenty-three, so we know which spring, just in case.
So you took some notes, I took some notes.
Yeah.
And we're going to do something with the charts to-
Yeah, that's what we need to do. And, okay.
So email Joe.
I don't see a subcommittee update, so I just want to say, if you have, I'm, right now, I'm preparing, um, basically a binder for possible questions. I plan on getting a town meeting. So if you guys could just send me questions that you would want answered, just so I can have a, I have, I'll say which ones I've answered now. Water usage question, why do we need turf, maintenance costs, materials and environmental concerns? What is the article on the warrant going to cover? What are the stages of the project, cost of this stage, and then the cost of all the stages? Project timeline, replacement costs, and then the replacement lifespan. So anything that's not those.
Do you have health concerns for students?
Um, no, good point.
So just, so email those all to, um, to Trevor, who's thankfully compiling this, and then he's going to make a pretty long binder with tabs, that we have.
Are you going to have it ready before Topsfield's?
Yeah, I plan to.
You're going to have a three-D bottle of it, too.
Um, and actually, before we leave that, I just, can we give a shout-out to Christina Young, who did buy and bar the bulk of the work for this?
I think the hardest has been wrangling all the people who are trying to help with their comments, but she's, I think these all looks really awesome and very professional. She's been doing an amazing job.
Do you want to give, me to give the ethics update?
Yeah.
Um, so soon the link to donate is going to be going live for Turfs Up. And so I had a question on whether or not it would be ethical for members to donate, um, and then continue to then vote on the project as it moves forward. So I called the Ethics Commission, and they're going to give me the written response within the next twenty days. So, but basically, it would create an appearance issue, and we would have to disclose if we were to make donations. And they are going to send me the form that we would need to use to make the donation. And they are gonna send me the form that we would need to use to make the donations, but we could. Make the donations as long as we do it like everyone else um and the public does. So just so.
Was there another way to do it? Sorry.
Really, we have to fill out a form. Other communication updates related to budget and turf now. Hey, if you if anybody comes up with any other ideas, and once this is done, we will get it towards getting mailed. And then send it to everybody in the digital form to send it to everybody that you know and. Social media places that you post and um. You know, try and get it to everybody. Yes.
I I just want to add to make it crystal clear because we are not getting into override on this, but the two towns where we have overrides. We as individuals have full freedom to promote. Voting. Yes, on that. So we can't use district resources for that, but it is part of our job to get our budget supported. So. Use your personal platforms.
Your personal mail, your personal Facebook. If you have a campaign page, that's considered a personal. Thing, but not not a ma- the Masco School Committee Facebook page can't.
Right.
Voting, voting yes at.
Putting it that way.
At um.
Oh.
At the back. But um it is our job to sell this budget, which. Includes overrides in two of the three towns and the turf.
I just wanted to make sure we didn't confuse like what we're doing as a committee with our with this versus what we can do individually.
Right.
So that we get it passed.
Okay, we good? Moving on. Content's reporting.
Too many windows. Hold on.
Watching as I walked in.
All right. So first off, uh, we, the art department is pleased to announce that uh the Mascanomit winning entries. In the two thousand twenty three six congressional district high school visual art competition, and there are the entries up there on the screen. Uh Vanessa Basai Basame, uh class of twenty three, Basami, thank you, uh letter building.
Fascinating.
That's me. Uh, letter building, it was the Best at School Award. Jenna Lindsay, uh, class of twenty four, Leva Mark, who's honorable mention, that's the center picture there. And Haley Serafino, uh, class of twenty three, Don't Be Afraid of Color, and it was an honorable mention uh in the Globe Art. And I'm sorry, this is the Congressional, uh, sixth congressional district high school visual art competition. Every spring, uh, the U. National Institute sponsors a nationwide high school visual art competition to recognize and encourage artistic talent in the nation and in each congressional district. So Mascanomit students submitted their entries to Congressman Seth Malton's office, uh, and panels of local artists from the sixth district. Uh, selected the winning entries. So congratulations. Um, we're actually gonna have these students come next at our next meeting, but. Uh, wanted to make sure we recognize them.
And we have a an arts recognition night, visual and performing.
Yes.
Next meeting.
Uh, and also from the art department, uh, the Scholastic Art and Writing Awards were recently announced and uh. We're happy to announce that uh middle school student Bella Dennis won a national silver medal uh for her sculpture, The Scorpion. It was cool. It's actually uh. An art project where they take uh electronic materials, like old electronics and break them apart and use them to create um animal sculptures. That was the art project.
I feel like one of the teachers talked about.
Yeah, so so that was a pretty cool project. Uh Bella's piece was selected by some of the foremost leaders in the visual arts uh for excellence and originality. Technical skill and the emergence of a personal voice. Uh, this year, more than two hundred and sixty thousand works of art and writing were submitted to the twenty twenty three Art Awards. And less than one percent uh received a gold or a silver medal. Um, so and this artwork will be published online at art and writing, art and writing dot org uh in June.
Love that.
Yep. Uh, we also had a uh. As a high school student, Paige Panagos won the National Silver Medal this year for her self portrait. Uh, titled Submerged, and obviously Paige is a swimmer, as John just told us. Earlier. And so again, again, congratulations to Paige. Um, again, one of two hundred and sixty thousand works of art that were submitted. Uh, and one percent of of those received that gold or silver medal. So um great work from our art department, and we're looking forward to seeing the students come. Uh, in two weeks. We also want to congratulate the cast and crew and advisors of Women in Wallace. Uh. Their uh their production of the one act play. Uh, our theater company progressed to the state finals of the Massachusetts Educational Theater Guild's Drama Festival. Uh, where they performed their play on Saturday, April first, at the Back Bay Event Center in John Hancock Hall. Uh, the following students were recognized by the festival's judges, uh Quinn Tierney for excellence in acting. Uh, and it also qualified her as an All-Star Acting Member Award. Uh, Dorian Florastell and Adrian Aiden Venkus uh for technical excellence and musical composition and performance. Uh, it's kind of an interesting thing. Women in Wallace does not have music. Uh, when you when you actually go and buy the buy the play, uh, these two students wrote wrote a score for it um on their own, so original work. Uh, pretty amazing work there. And we also had Campbell Robinson, who was recognized for excellence for the role of featured dancer uh in the performance. So. It was a great show. I was happy to get to get to go see it a couple of weeks ago in Boston. It was fantastic. Uh, also want to congratulate um Brian Pereira. Our theater director. Just say this first time, um, at least according. To Mr. O'Keefe, the first time the Mascanomit has entered the competition since he's been here, so it's over thirty years. Um, and to make it to the state finals in your first attempt is pretty remarkable. So congratulations to them, and we're gonna see them in a couple of weeks. Uh, we also want to congratulate uh Mascanomit senior Alexa D'Amato, uh, who we found out today is the twenty twenty three recipient of the National Press Club. Journalism Journalism Institute's Richard G. Zimmerman Journalism Scholarship. That's a mouthful. National Press Club's Journalism Institute has a press release that I'll have uh linked in my blog. They can take a look at it and has a wonderful write up. Uh, about Alexa. Uh, the Zimmerman Scholarship is named for a longtime National Press Club member uh who died in two thousand and eight and endowed a scholarship in aid of high school seniors who wish to pursue a career in journalism. Uh, the National Press Club Journalism Institute promotes an engaged global citizenry through an independent and free press. Equips journalists with skills and standards to inform the public in ways that inspire a more representative democracy. Uh, as the nonprofit affiliate of the National Press Club, the institute powers journalism in the public interest. So congratulations uh to Alexa. It's a great honor. Uh, just an update on the high school principal search. Um, the posting for the position of principal of Mascanomit Regional High School closed on Friday, April seventh. Uh, we currently have twenty two applicants for the position. Uh, resume screening will take place later this week. And semifinalists will be invited to interview at Mascanomit during the week of April twenty fourth. I'm in the process of finalizing the members of the interview committee, uh, which consists of representatives from district administration, uh, department heads, faculty, parents. School committee and a high school student. Uh, the interview committee will narrow down the pool to two or three finalists who will be invited to Mascanomit for a series of public interviews. Uh, during the week of May first is what we're scheduling those for at the moment. Uh, part of the public interviews will entail an online Zoom session with parents and interested members of the public. Uh, held in held in the evening, so uh everyone here can actually log in and attend that, and there'll be feedback forms um that I'll be collecting electronically through uh. Through Google Forms.
Just avoid the second because that's town meeting.
Yes. We will. Uh, and some more information on the dates will come out. Uh, as we get through the month of April. Uh, we're also going to be hosting a uh for the state uh Office of Public School Monitoring for a tiered focused monitoring review. And this will happen during the week of May fifteenth. The Office of Public School Monitoring visits each district and charter school every three years to monitor compliance with federal and state special education and civil rights regulations. Uh, areas of review related to special education include student assessments, determination of eligibility, the individualized education program or IEP team process. And IEP development and implementation. Uh, areas of review related to civil rights include bullying, student discipline. Physical restraint and equal access to school programs for all students. In addition to the onsite visit, parent outreach is an important part of the review process. Uh, the review review chairperson from the Office of Public School Monitoring will send all parents of students with disabilities an online survey. That focuses on key areas of their child's special education program. Survey results results will contribute to the development of a report. Uh, during the onsite review, the Office of Public School Monitoring will interview the chairperson of the district's uh Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Uh, other onsite activities may include interviews of district staff and administrators, uh, reviews of student records and onsite observations. Parents and other individuals may contact Jill Lang, who's the public school monitoring chairperson, and her email address will be in my blog. Uh, to to request a telephone interview. If an individual requires an accommodation such as a translation to participate in an interview, the department will make necessary arrangements. Uh, within approximately sixty days after the onsite visit, uh, the review chairperson will provide the district with a report. With information about areas in which the district meets or exceeds regulatory requirements. And areas in which the district requires assistance to correct or improve practices, and the public will have uh access to the to that final report on Desi's website.
Lot of work.
That's a lot of work to add of the CPR review. So Lynn's Lynn's right in the midst of it all right now, so.
Um, any questions for Mike? Can I move on?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
The most riveting part of the agenda. So for second reads, we have. The B sections, BA, BB, AA, BA slash BB, BA and BEDB. I don't know. I cleaned it up and so as we approved the last time. Anyone have any comments, questions?
And did you say, are you saying that separately? Okay.
I don't want to confuse them.
So if there's no questions, does anyone have a motion? Actually, we're supposed to start with a motion anyway. The motion to approve as cleaned up, moved. So he's moving.
I'll second.
Carolyn seconding. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hey, hearing them all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Costa? Um, and any abstentions?
Who cares?
Um.
The second. Policy in this section is the sustainability policy where we. Get up and incorporated the changes we discussed at the last meeting. And I actually don't want to see.
Can I start with a motion so we can discuss?
Yeah.
Move to approve as presented.
I'll second that.
Carolyn seconding. Okay, any discussion on this?
Did we vote on this last time? No.
No, these were first read.
Sustainable. Well, we read it first last time, but I don't think we voted on it.
Uh, let's see. I don't think. Check the minutes.
Check the minutes.
Check the minutes.
I think that was my part when you were. The thing.
That's for policy reads. Doesn't seem to be a vote.
No, we did not vote on it.
Because there was a lot.
Yeah.
Of things.
Yeah, so this is actually a first read on the sustainability. There's a motion.
There's a motion to accept it as. So any discussion on it? Okay, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? It passes its first read, yes.
Yes.
Chris.
I have a question related to the content and necessarily the policy. Is this the time to ask it or? Like, I'm wondering how we measure the carbon footprint here and track that and.
I think it's it's a commitment to trying to improve it. But now it's kind of hard to prove, I think.
Like, yeah, so like, how do we like, so we're approving this policy, but I'd like to know that. We know what we're saying and we know what we're doing and what the actions are. To that effect, like I know the environmental team does um the tree punish to offset the carbon footprint here and. Wondering how that's measured and what that's compared to.
I don't know that there's a measure, a measurable um. Measure something to measure it. I think that as we go forward and make decisions about what gets put into the building, you know, that this should be um consider all, you know. Options should be considered because of this policy. Um. And it's not saying that we're looking for a zero, you know, an offset zero, um, but that we are gonna do things. To make it better.
I do. It does say regularly assessing, so I see what you're getting at. It's our way of assessing.
So it's not for the school committee, so it's whoever is in charge of the building. We're saying that as a school committee, it's our policy that we want it regularly assessed, so we would expect our administrators to do that. So. That we're not doing it.
But it's we're telling them to do something that we don't even know how they're gonna do.
That that's my question.
I think we do that all the time.
Don't even executive as a measure out there. We could be asking them to do the impossible.
In which case they can come back to us and say that this is impossible and it can't be done in an affordable way, and then we can, you know, make a change at that point, but. I think ask asking them to do something is.
I think it's worth a discussion.
Mm hmm. I think there are ways, I'm sure, Mike, you can speak to us, as ways of assessing energy efficiency.
Right.
And comparing it to previous years, things like that. Right?
Yeah.
Um, so one of the. It was a sort of attached other piece of this that has links to like all the different kinds of laws and regulations and guidelines from the state, which I think. Would be a tools that the administration that that sort of accompany this. And it there was also an origin, like one earlier versions that um really laid out specifically, included things like tree punish, like listed all the all the kinds of things. But policies are the how and the uh their aspirational, not the how, sorry, the why.
Right.
And what? And the what? So that does get into the how, which is procedural, but my hope is by inserting the lines about environmental laws, it sort of. Looks to those guidelines, which. In some cases might um give some of those measures or at least the tools to be able to use to do them. Uh, and an example of energy efficiency improvements is. Kind of straightforward, like you have an audit and you replace your light bulbs, you know, so. Uh, my hope is that it gives the direction and the why enough that. Yeah.
Yeah.
I will just say, like. I appreciate all the work you did, Zilly, in bringing this to the policy subcommittee, but I don't appreciate. The process and how it got to us. I was told when I was first newly elected that. That was big on the whole recall thing, and I was told like that you can't just do that. You're now a member of the committee. And this kind of just got thrown on the policy subcommittee. Um. And again, I appreciate the work you did, but not necessarily the process, and it kind of goes to what Costa was talking about two weeks ago.
It was it was a goal of the committee for this year.
So it was the recall and looking at the members.
Which I would advise then, in that case, I kind of could see that we were nearing the spring, so kind, and I knew, so I offered something to the committee to look at, so if you have something to offer for the district agreement for us to look at, I think that we should.
You're busy with policy review.
Yeah, and I I just saw it as part of the building, uh, part of the
Getting it before the capital.
Before the capital plan. And that was what I think actually Jeff expressed that, like, do you have, you know, a policy about this?
I I and actually reminded me, like, this isn't, I actually think it's helpful for the towns, for people in the towns who have concerns about turf to see this. In fact, I can tell you, I've heard from a number of people that um, you know, who might otherwise not support it, to feel comfortable. But so that's kind of why I think.
And I understand that. I just.
And I get your point, Trevor.
But you're right, your thing was a goal, so if you bring it forward.
We we're busy.
We are busy, but can't get it on a um an agenda. I mean, we should be. We have committed to talking about the district.
You're making a promise right now.
Huh?
To get it on an agenda.
I, yes.
Um, noted.
Noted.
To be fair, this has been something I've been wanting to do for the past four years, so just to be fair.
Costa, how what's your timeline?
So you you may have, you may go into your next term.
We'll see.
First year of your second term is like a.
That's the year.
Lucky year.
But to know.
Going back to the measurability, do you guys feel like this is written so it's you would be able to measure? Yeah, we're working towards these things.
Assessing for energy efficiency is something we would normally do anyway.
Okay.
We can measure what we've consumed. We can't assess for efficiency.
Right, you can compare it to the year before, what you've consumed and.
Yeah, I'm not sure that would measure efficiency.
Right.
I mean, because you get all sorts of variability.
Because you're assessing for efficiency improvements.
So this is what it was this year and what is it next year?
Or, you know, looking at saying, okay, we are changing our lights over to LED, gonna improve our energy efficiency, you know, those kinds of things.
Insolence for that.
Yeah, we would bring in National Grid or an outside firm to do those things first.
I guess I'm just asking, the way it's written, does it make sense to you guys? That's really my question, like that you could keep tabs on it and.
I would have to.
So maybe we can do that before uh the second read.
Yeah, what do we have to?
I forgot this was still first read.
Just to see if there's like, if there if there's something that is accessible in here, if there's a different language.
I mean, I think that makes sense, right? Because I mean, you guys are the ones that will be doing the day to day, so making sure the language makes sense to you guys. If there's something that makes more sense, I think I'd be interested in hearing it. Um, can you?
And on to a list of things with your new committee.
With your new, yeah. Okay, are we moving on?
Um, sorry.
We'll discuss this up for the second read, I guess.
Yeah.
Okay.
But we've got a positive vote for passive. Do we not vote?
We did.
We did.
It was eight to one.
One extension. I'm not a tension one negative.
So throwing out you the whole case section, because we finished it, we fit in our last meeting, the subcommittee. And we got through it, so um it's good to have completed sections um so that they can be posted on our website in full. Um, and forty-seven page, I will close. Okay. Um, we chose to keep the Masco version, no changes. Um, KBA, um, we made a change to add where it says parents to add slash guardians so that it's consistent throughout the policy manual, keeping the Masco version. Non-custodial rights. We actually thought we're recommending adoption of the mask version of KBBA. And if I don't know if it, if anyone has questions or comments, um.
Speak up.
Speak up, yeah.
Everybody's looking at their computer.
KBD, the recommendation is to delete this policy um from the manual and um adopt because it's actually included in KBE, so the two sections are actually merged. And KBE is relations with school commit, community organizations. Um. I'm sorry, we just took the Masco version and we're rescinding KBB and then merging two versions of KBE together. And we're bringing in our support organization, which is our boosters guidelines and reference to that into the Masco policy.
Thank you to the people who worked very hard on that.
Um, KBEA. That is um a recommendation to rescind it because that language was actually moved into the previous or combined with the previous one. KCB is recommendation to keep the Masco version with the deletion of um the last sentence of the first paragraph. And we're not taking anything from mask. Um, KCD, public gifts. We are keeping the Masco recommendation to keep the Masco version and delete um the language about the amount of gifts that the superintendent has the authority to to accept because it's not legal, not proper.
So all gifts are approved by the school committee?
It's in the practice anyway.
Mm-hmm. Can I just ask a quick question before we go further? On KCB, why are we removing that one sentence? Was it somewhere else?
Because.
Yeah.
Yeah, because of the um intends to extend every effort to identify if we aren't doing that, then we are in violation, and it seemed pointed to the members that were present.
Back to the accepting gifts and stuff.
Yep.
I feel like that was there um back when we did the SSO stuff. Um, because like allowing like small gifts to come in without the committee's approval, remember, like?
Not legal.
Okay.
Nor would I want anything coming into this place that you all.
Okay, very good.
Good enough.
Jeff said.
Okay. Um, KDB, we're recommending to keep the Masco version, which was actually, I believe, very similar to the mask version, but it had Masco flavor, so keep things to Masco flavor. Um, ADD, we um we in we kept our Masco version, but we incorporated language um or replace bullet number one with language that says the school committee chair will be the official spokesperson of the committee. Um, our language in that section was a little bit more um in involved than it was more um had more things. It was more Masco. We like to be wordy here.
And so this was less Masco, which was good in this case.
Yep, and we kept the language that said, school committee members may express their individual viewpoints, but may not speak on behalf of the entire school committee. Okay. Okay, public complaints. KE, the recommendation is to um keep the Masco version with adding the um paragraph in red about complaints. Um, and basically anonymous complaints are disregarded.
So only males can make complaints. Says complaining must submit his complaint.
Hello.
Their complaint.
Thank you.
There we go.
Well, it'll be half of the complaints, so, you know.
And we added that cross reference to the.
Yeah, the problem solver guide.
Is that gonna be a live link, except the intent?
Um, I think so, but I don't know eventually if it will be. I think once it's it's hosted by Mask. What will happen is how Dorothy explained it is once we have the whole manual done, it will get reapproved again before it gets posted on their website.
Are we? We have it on our website too, right?
Yeah.
Because their website.
It will go to there, it will be taken off ours and go to theirs, but as we approve each group, each like letter section, it gets put onto ours. Now.
Now.
You're mentioning that when it gets on theirs, does it like previously ours, you you go in and you can just look at one at a time? When it's on theirs, can you do that, or is it how it is? Is it just?
Oh, no, and theirs is just one at a time.
Okay, but for now, it's.
Ours, we're just doing this to try and keep something.
On the website.
Something sane and current. It's just not.
Yeah, okay.
Is that common with other districts that have masks to use them several? If you go to Tuxbury Public Schools, for example, it's.
Just just go to the MAC website and see, every district is actually there for anybody to look at.
And it's all.
Even if they don't.
No, only.
Every district who has MAC host is available for to look at, and you can search them all, actually.
Yeah, it's it's actually more user friendly because you can search them and print them one by one.
The search is the big thing, I think.
Yeah.
We, I don't got it. I don't remember how many years ago it was that we decided to do this. I mean, this is a long time.
For, I think this was like you guys.
Yeah.
Wasn't it before?
We started.
Started it. Started it before.
About here.
I was like twenty nineteen, right?
Yeah, I remember.
That was the year that we decided to go ahead with it, but we had been talking about it for at least the the year before that.
Yeah, because before that, we would do a couple policies.
And Kevin would make the changes.
Yeah.
Superintendent was.
Right, there were definitely version control issues.
I remember Bill telling us about mask hosting when we were still up there, so that was pre-pandemic.
But I mean, the, once this is all completed, the idea is you still referees will review them, but yeah, to make, and then you put the.
I feel like that's a policy. It is a policy. All right, um, community use of school facilities. They are actually the only change to this, so it's KF. Um, ours is coded, was coded as KFB, so it's just going to be changed to KF. And the Masco um version was acceptable, recommended. Um, we are removing KF dash R because that's a procedure and it doesn't need to be in the manual. And that's a lot of pages. KFA, use of the district electronic sign and outdoor signs and um in talking with Karen, this came up when the electronic sign came to be out front. Um, it doesn't, we reviewed it because the concern that we discussed last week was actually whether or not it prohibited other thing, other signage, and um the determination was that it didn't.
Or that any exception could be approved by.
Yeah.
The superintendent.
And so the the recommendation is to keep KFA as is. KFB, um authorized use of school owned equipment. Uh, the recommendation is to keep um the Masco version. It's actually, it's going to be recoded. It was KF and ours and KFB here, but so um they're going to recode it. Um, use of school grounds for motor vehicles. The recommendation is to delete it because it's covered in um another section of the policy manual. And then KGA is the student support organizations, and that policy was um drafted, actually put together by Dorothy with our approval because it takes all the language that the um that was done with the booster work, so and made it into a policy rather than just a procedure.
That's great.
Good old days.
Um, okay, KH, KH is public solicitations by the schools. Again, for this one, um, we did be consistent and change parents to parents slash guardians, and then um we kept the Masco version and added um number three that allows, that defines PTA and PTO groups and other groups representing the school, school employees to be considered school groups. Um, and that those will be governed by the committee's policy on staff solicitations, which is under the personnel section. It's K um GB, EBC is that particular policy. KHB is advertising in the school. Um, I believe this two policies were identical, so we just keep the Masco version in that case. Um, KHC deals with promotional materials. Again, we are recommending keeping the Masco version. Classroom visitations. Um, this is, um, we looked at both of them, and the one section that the mask policy had that ours didn't is that is in red that um all visitors report to main office upon entering and leaving the building. We believed it to be the procedure, but we decided to put it in the policy just so that it's clear and no questions. And there's a renumbering issue.
Yeah.
Or numbering issue that I didn't catch. Reason we chose the words requested and encouraged.
What?
And that red that was added.
Or just expected, right?
Ex, yeah, expected versus requested, perhaps.
The bottom, like third line, beginning of the third line.
Have that required?
I like required, yes.
Well, I was kind of, I was thinking that, but.
Teachers are requested to.
Requested, felt a little too.
You put in required.
Okay, good. Thank you.
The teachers can request. Our teachers are requested to ask visitors, they've registered.
Or expected.
Expected.
Contract issue?
As Jeff just whispered, it shouldn't be staff.
Hmm, yes. Or will.
Or will.
But I think people didn't like that last time when I.
Well, this is visitors to the building.
Should be show.
You just say staff to ask.
They shall.
Yeah.
Okay, I like will better, but that's.
Why, why, why?
What's the difference between shell and will?
Lawyer should like shell.
I like shell. Shell seems old. We're leaning, we're learning.
Very policy-ish.
We're moving towards serious.
Clean language, though.
Are we?
Lawyers are moving.
Sounds plain.
Must.
Oh, wow.
I'll show Ken.
Ken.
Really different thing.
It must be. You have to retrain your brain.
You do.
Better.
Oh, good.
Really giving time. But it's getting punchy. So, um, so in that one, based on what we're hearing, we're changing it to required and shaft.
Yes.
Okay. And.
And changed it to staff.
Yes, relations with police authorities, KLG, keeping our policy as is. It um mirrored the mask version that was suggested as the policy. Um, and then for whatever reason, um Masco has relationship with the fire department. Um, and it's not a mask policy, so Dorothy didn't think that it was any need to get rid of it, so the recommendation is to just leave it there. Um, relationships with planning authorities. Um, we added the last sentence. Um, hmm, but otherwise we are, the two policies match, so.
Can I interrupt? Before we get too far ahead, are we assuming, like especially the one that we just did that edit to? Is it anywhere stated that this is during school day hours? Is that?
The visitor one?
The visitor one? Yeah. Because that's obviously, like when we say a visitor, we're talking about.
Yeah, but it's visiting.
Classroom visitation.
Classroom visitations is the title.
Yeah, that's the title, okay. So just want to make sure it doesn't get miss, if we're going to use stronger language, that we're not. Yeah, I didn't check. Be misinterpreted to include like after school.
This is all, it's all about observing.
You should have.
All right, thank you. I get lost. Where were we at?
All right, relationships with planning authorities, um, recommendation is to keep the policy as is and then add that. If there wasn't a butter notification for basically for um change in use or something going on with the property around us, but.
So any, any butter notification? Is that the intent of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you get those? Have you seen one?
Oh, yeah.
We just got one, that's why I was asking, it's like, ooh, okay.
I got one for a Title V inspection.
Oh, okay.
So that would.
You're gonna have to.
Maybe we.
Yes, just go on the consent agenda.
Ah, okay, well, that'd be good.
Yeah.
But you don't have to judge whether it's.
Yeah, you just put them all on the consent agenda, that's the.
We don't have to approve anything, you just have to give us.
Notify.
Yeah, okay. So the the concern was just that, you know, I don't know if you want to explain it.
So the Middleton Elementary Schools. Basically went to a zoning board meeting, saying that they were never notified, but the superintendent was notified. Like said, told the butter, they were never notified, but the superintendent was notified and never told the committee, so the school committee kind of just. Didn't look like they had all the knowledge present at the moment.
Um, and is that supposed to be an a butter or did you say any a butter? Right, okay, I wasn't sure if you was supposed to be clear, just any, okay.
Okay, KLK, relations with local government authorities, um, the recommendation is keep the Masco. Co-policy, because I believe it's identical with our flavor to the mask policy, and that is all she wrote.
Oh, so do, um, this is a first reading, so do I have a. Motion to accept policy manual section K as a first read?
As, as revised.
As revised. Trevor's moving it and somebody.
Yeah.
Was really seconding all in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thank you guys for keeping these moving this year.
So is, is. Like, is K representative of where we are in completing it?
No, it's a hotbed or a month, right?
Yeah.
Any idea, like recorded halfway through?
Well, so, so we've gone through the longest, I believe, sections. Done A, B, C, no, we, no. We've done A, B. I. J, A and K.
Out of L.
But some of the others are like, um, for instance, facilities, there's only like three policies in that section.
Okay.
So what do you think, like another year?
Yeah, if if whoever's on the policy subcommittee next just keeps it moving. You just have to be committed to do it, but you know, depending on what else comes up.
Right.
So if there's a.
Pandemic.
Anyway, we have to be mindful that we have two hour meetings like once a month for a while. Sometimes they want to go over, so.
But we can't get onto the Masco site till they're all done. Right? Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, you want to get through them.
Want to get through them, because I don't know. Yeah.
Oh, thank you, guys. Now it's kind of work. So moving on to the consent agenda, we have the approval of March twenty ninth, twenty twenty three, meeting minutes. Ten warrants that have been signed in an amount of one million, three hundred and sixty five thousand, one hundred and ninety six dollars and thirty one cents, since March twenty ninth. Thank you, Bill and or Dominic. You're accepting a gift from PAC for uh the class twenty twenty four, thank you guys. Proving the ultimate frisbee field trip. Accepting football boosters donations, donation, thank you to football boosters and accepting MEF donation to field hockey student activity count. Thank you to MEF. Does anybody need anything pulled out? Do I have a motion to approve as presented? Do I have a second?
A second.
Thanks. All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Excellent.
You didn't have updates, but I I wanted.
Yeah, I don't know why they dropped off this agenda.
I wanted to promote one thing that Triton Council is running that we should all go to.
You can do that.
Okay, next as I can.
Just can't take any action or anything.
I I just wanted, if if you guys haven't seen the hidden in plain sight exhibit in years past that Triton Council has hosted. It's the day of our next meeting, but in the morning, uh, Wednesday, April twenty sixth, nine to eleven AM. There might be more than one date, yeah.
Really good.
There are two.
There's, there should be two, right? I don't know why this.
Usually have it all day.
And Thursday, so and then morning and evening, so Wednesday and Thursday, April twenty sixth and twenty seventh. Nine to eleven AM and seven to nine PM. So where are you gonna be? The flyer. It's pretty crazy, seven to nine.
What is hit?
I learned a lot. I remember I won a couple of years ago, I cannot believe it, and I work with adolescents.
Yeah.
It was like, wow.
And the SROs from Masco come and they um. For the, one of the things I found most impactful was, they were like, and we got this out of a kid's locker and we got this out of a kid's locker, like it was stuff they confiscated. Oh, that was the incident. I was like, oh, anyway.
Yeah. Right. So, thank you for that, um, with that, then.
I have a question.
Oh, yeah, question?
Has all three towns signed off on the SRO agreement for twenty four?
Oxford did, didn't they?
I believe.
Said he did in that email.
Yeah. Middleton did in October, Oxford in end of February, but I don't know about Tops.
Are you asking a question that you know the answer to?
Yes.
I don't.
The TAs talked to the other TAs. Isn't that who needs to talk?
They've had it since October, all the other two towns.
They need pressure.
Okay.
I will send an email.
Would you like us to do, Costa? Get your board to sign this, okay?
I'll commit to sending an email tomorrow.
Kevin calling.
Good at, um, I am making a motion to adjourn, or I am adjourning. Because I can.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Jeff. What's up? What's that of it? Definitely, I will be in Florida.